Call the regular session of our Cape Girardeau City Council to order. This is our September 19th, 2011 meeting. Clerk, if we could have the roll call.
Mr. Glenn Zidey.
President.
Mr. Proffer.
Here.
Mayor Rediger. Here.
Ms. Schneider.
Ms. Swan.
Here.
Ms. Tracy.
Here.
Here. Council, an adoption of the agenda.
I'll move.
I'll move by Tracy.
Second.
And seconded by Swan. Any discussion? Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. No presentations tonight. Communications through the city council. Council and myself and Swan, Snyder, Gail, our city clerk and our city manager, Scott Meyer, attended the Missouri Municipal League Conference Annual Meeting in Kansas City last week. Very informative meeting. Lot of information that will be perused over and hear more about as we move along. I'll give you just a couple highlights myself and I'll ask the others to give some thoughts also. Many of the sessions were very, very good and it's well worth our time to go there and then spend the days there. I was particularly interested in a session that we had in a speech on, I think it was entitled "Telework." It was creating a new way of thinking in the workplace and that's, obviously, in cases that the person doesn't have to be within the walls of the building to do, to perform their work at all times. And creative ways to achieve that, that adds to productivity, limits the need of space, and a new way of thinking. And I know Scott and staff are working on those issues now, but I see lots of opportunities as we work our way through those issues. Another one, and then I'll refer to the others, but had a speech and I'm gonna let Scott talk about this more, but "Straighten the Pipe." Straighten the Pipe. Yeah, "Straighten the Pipe." Sounds pretty simple, but Scott will work on that. So Kathy, I know Loretta isn't here tonight. Go ahead and give us some of your impressions.
This afternoon, I did download all of the PowerPoint presentations and emailed all of them to you.
I saw you did that, yes.
Those I did not attend, I've not had an opportunity to transcribe my notes yet. I'll do that and I'll send that to you as well. Also, the pre-session I attended on Sunday was excellent and I have requested his PowerPoint. He said emailing for it because he did not post it. So I will get that from him. There's some additional reading materials, books, that have been recommended throughout the entire conference that would be good reading material for any council members. So I will include that with the notes and I'll email that to you when I have a chance to write all down. Loretta and I did tour an innovation center in Independence, which was a fascinating partnership. It was an old hospital facility in downtown Independence that had been purchased by primarily the K-12 school district and they had renovated it. The city, or the school district's administrative offices were in that building and the Economic Development Council, it was only three people in Independence, were working with that facility. And it's one of 70 kitchen innovators in the nation. People lease space in the kid, one of four to five kitchens for, to develop a product. And one lady is actually starting to export her granola. It's called hippie, hippie granola or something like that. And then they have a biotech innovation center in that as well. And they're charging floor square foot space rental for people to come in and use the lab space that they have. So it's a really interesting idea for use of the facility. If we would ever have a facility that has lost its original purpose, we could certainly look into other ideas in other communities that are being utilized to put that building back to use. So it's fascinating, very well designed, very well run, and doing a lot for economic development in that community.
Who did the plan for it? Did they have a technical school?
They work with Metropolitan Community College, although it's not directly closely affiliated with Metropolitan Community College. But I think they've visited places in California. I think California has some, obviously, some kitchen innovation centers that are in operation.
I think I forgot to mention, they gave us a demonstration the final morning on the expanded MML website. And for all council and staff, there's loads of information in there that is at our quick disposal right on the website that is easily maneuvered in through the website, which was really, really impressive. And the knowledge is right at our fingertips.
Yes, it is. Great website.
Scott?
You mentioned the "Straightening of the Pipes." That's a presentation called "Extreme Government Makeover." This gentleman's name is Ken Miller. He's been in government for a few decades. He now is a consultant. I guess that's the reward for writing a few books. But he, he actually at one time, point in time, was the assistant with the Missouri Department of Revenue. And his job was to work with the motor vehicle lines and make those go quicker. But one of the things that he was, looked at was tax returns and those happening much faster. When he started, it was in excess of three months to get your tax return. When you, you remember those years in the early 90s? You'd send your tax return in, Missouri, and it took three months to do it. They straightened the pipes, they straightened the processes out for returning your tax turn. He said that it went from six months and when they actually looked at the actual work it took necessary to process that, it was somewhere, I believe, like 20 minutes where the work is all it really took to process one. And they got it down to three days. Six months, or three months down to six days. It was six days. To where they actually got the check back in six days after electronically submitting them. It was interesting, in the first year that they did it, they actually got rid of a whole set of call centers where people were, sat there and all they did was they answered the phone and figured out where people's return was and called them back and told them where it was in the process. They were able to get rid of that entire bank of phones, they thought, until the first year they did it, people, a lot of people kept calling in. And what they wanted to know when they called in was, "I got this check, where did it come from?" They didn't even believe that it came that quick. And don't go all into everything, but it really drives us to process and says, "What can we do to make government processes streamlined so that we can serve more people and do more good?" That's what we're about in government, is doing good. And if we're able to be more streamlined and more efficient, we're able to do more good with the citizens. And so that's his book, "Extreme Government Makeover." We're gonna purchase that for our management team. I think Heather's already got it ordered and in, and so we're gonna begin to go through that as a team and look for ways we can straighten the pipes. And he said it's, the processes are like the pipes in your house. If you straighten them up, you can get more capacity with the same pipes. So that's what we're, we'll be looking to do. That was, he was an excellent speaker. I also met with the Home Dock Cities, cities that have casinos in them. We're now a member of that, that organization and talk about common problems. Mainly for me, I just got to meet everybody and talk about where the guy, updated them on where we were. They were all interested in the, in the vote we had regarding the smoking ban. And they also wanted to know where we were on the construction. So we were able to update them on that. And it was interesting to hear them talk about some of the things that they go through. Talked about the next generation infrastructure. This is really looking forward. There's been some innovative ideas in developing infrastructure in regions and how you can maybe join in a region and make infrastructure improvements that aren't available to you as an island. Not sure where that takes us, but there were some ideas there that we want to look at. And then it went to interesting session on mental health. And they talked about, at the level of the officer, that they offered some training whereby our officers can receive additional training to identify people who have mental health problems and get them steered in the right direction. It's not a large percentage of calls that have a mental health problem, but those that do, you can't solve their problem in the existing processes that we have. But by identifying and getting them in the right place, you can oftentimes reduce all those repeat calls that you tend to get from those folks. So I thought that was something we'll certainly look into. Other things, I could, I could go into others, but don't want to, it's the rest of time. But it was worthwhile and I'll put my notes and share them as well.
Very, very worthwhile conference, Sunday through Wednesday morning. Appreciate both Loretta Snyder and Kathy Swan going to represent along with me the council and of course, Gail. Gail, by the way, was inducted as treasurer, I think, this year. So you're in the pipeline. And city clerks, we're very proud of Gail and her work in the state effort in city clerks. Other council communications?
I think what I'd like to point out and send at least a burly welcome to a number of visitors we have planned this weekend. A very long weekend planned through some of the efforts of some local citizens for an electric car convention. So I think that culminates with the parade, some drag racing out at the airport, and a car show on Saturday, right? At Arena Park?
Kappa Hall.
Kappa Hall Park. So I just give everybody a heads up that that is occurring. Something I know that our community will do is roll out the red carpet and encourage to attend, the first time that this has ever been done. Started in a grassroots effort locally here in town and has grown to what I understand to be over 400 expected visitors and probably 100-plus cars are showing up. Rush fired into a big deal.
They are coming worldwide.
That's right.
Cape Girardeau. And with this being the first, I anticipate this will be a growing. Mention I'm scheduled into four of the sessions. The Friday evening racing will be at the airport. The show at Kappa Hall is at 1:45 Saturday, followed by a parade. And some social events on Wednesday and Thursday. So they have a full week, starting Wednesday.
Do you know which car you're driving yet?
I don't. No.
I'm driving a Porsche. I've seen it, boy, it's fancy.
It'll be really, really interesting. I encourage people to participate and actually witness this convention. Any other communications, council?
Mr. Mayor, I saw that we have a young man in uniform that snuck in after we had finished our meeting opening. I was gonna ask if he could approach the podium and let me embarrass him for a moment.
Okay. Didn't see him. Welcome. You did sneak in. And I will defer to our resident Eagle Scout, councilman boss.
So young man, why don't you give us your name and what troop you're with and why you're attending our meeting tonight?
My name's Carson Rutter. I'm from Troop Five. I'm attending to get my assistantship in community.
Okay. And as a part of that, I believe you have to attend a civic meeting, right? Take some notes and report back on what you learned? Okay. I'll talk to you after the meeting tonight and see if you learned anything, okay? Good to see you in uniform. Thanks for being here tonight.
Carson, welcome. Any other communications from council? No public hearings this evening. Appearances, appearances from anyone on any item that is listed on the agenda? Is there anyone to appear on any item that is listed on the agenda? Yes, sir?
Hi, Mike. I'm here today to address the agenda on the new building codes.
Okay.
I put my glasses on, I'm getting older up here. But I've been acquainted with this from the very beginning. I am on the Board of Appeals. I am board member of the National Home Builder Association and the local. And the chief is probably 100% right in a lot of assumptions. A lot of assumptions incorrect. The assumption that the eye joists burn quicker is probably true. There's really not a whole lot at this point, but there's some tests that I would love for you to look at. American Plywood Association, which actually does the review of wood joist products and engineered lumber, sent out this. It's called "The Wood Joyce Floor Firefighters and Fire." And the conclusion is that in 2012, this very likely will be in the building. The problem is 2012 is three years from now. And today's reality is we're suffering from 34% unemployment. We're getting the same money we are for houses five or six years ago, yet at the same time, roofing has doubled, siding, heating petroleum base is up 20, 30%, copper metal base products are up 20%. The thought that you can just pass the cost alone, along, is a mute issue. It can't be done. Even if you could get somebody to pay the extra, when it comes time to get the loan, the people could not get the appraisal. I know this for a fact because in the last six months or so, I've sold about three homes or four. And I keep running the same problems. I hear on the blogs, of course, I was a professional blogger, which is a little irritating, that, you know, people would pay the extra? Well, I don't think they would. And, you know, free choice is out there. I think you should probably let them decide if they want to pay the extra.
Well, where we, where we are on that, per the first reading last, and an amendment last month, we are in the second, third reading of that code now without the amendments, as they were defeated last time. So they are not in the bill that we're doing the second, third reading on, nor are they in the bill that we did the vote on at the last council meeting.
I misunderstood, apparently from the Missourian articles, that this was gonna be to revisit.
It could have been.
It could.
Yeah.
But it is not going.
It is not.
I'll keep my big mouth shut and say thank you.
But appreciate your interest and appreciate your information.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike. Anyone else here to appear? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Mary Rose Roberts. I'm here tonight in my capacity as a writer for Fire Chief Magazine. However, I also am a resident of Cape. I am here to discuss the ordinance to amend Chapter Seven of the city code relating to the 2009 International Code Council codes. I'm here to share what I have learned as a reporter about the proposed building code changes and fire safety. First, it's important to note that this is not a new issue and Cape is not the only council to face this issue. The International Code Council is a national standards body that provides building code guidelines to government agencies that, and it states that builders must install an additional layer of sheetrock on the basement ceilings of new residential structures built with lightweight construction in lieu of fire sprinkler systems. The Fire Service and ICC agree that this additional sheetrock will give residents more routes and time to exit a structure, give firefighters more time to knock down or distinguish the fire, prevent firefighters from falling through floors because eye joists fail, which may lead to injury or death, contains the fire in one room, which reduces homeowner's property loss and threat fire will spread to the neighbor's house. The extra sheetrock is needed because new residential homes are built with lightweight construction materials. Like our previous speaker noted, using lightweight construction makes homes cheaper to build and cheaper to buy, but they also are more flammable and structural components fail faster during a fire. In fact, if you live in one of our historic homes off Broadway Avenue, reports show you'll have twice as much time to escape the fire compared to new construction homes. This is because new homes use lightweight construction materials. For example, in older homes, the joists are made of solid pieces of wood, such as a two-by-ten. New construction calls for the use of eye joists, which are made of glued-together wood chips. The result is during a fire, they fail faster, the floor collapses, and residents or firefighters are at risk of falling through the floor while they're trying to escape or fight the fire. The ICC, national standards body, and the National Fire Service believe this is an essential construction detail in lieu of residential sprinklers in order to save lives given the nature of lightweight construction. So does Cape's Fire Chief, as well as the International Association of Fire Chiefs, the U.S. Fire Administration, and others. The argument against it is cost and following local trends. I was quoted three grand for sheetrock for a 2,400-square-foot house. If a homeowner paid it through a 30-year mortgage, it would cost less than $10 a month. That's the same amount as two lattes from a coffee shop, a movie ticket, or a double buffalo burrito from Burritoville. The others looking at area trends. If they are doing it, we're not gonna do it attitude. Yet Cape is the biggest city between St. Louis and Memphis, has a university that educates the uneducated, and has the Bill Emerson Bridge, an engineering marvel. Let's not follow others. Let them follow Cape. I wanted to show a video presentation about Leesburg, Virginia, a place encountering the same issue, but was unable to show a video. So I'm just gonna play the audio of this two-minute video really quickly for everyone. There's nothing dramatic. There's nothing to be censored.
Both in Leesburg, Virginia, but with two very different outcomes. One house burned to the ground, the other didn't. And the reason may have to do with the age of those homes.
Your Wi-Fi's not too great in here.
Firefighters in Loudoun County and across the country say this is often typical of the fires they see in newer homes, building over the last two decades. This is what is considered lightweight construction.
Lightweight construction that we're seeing now is made of lighter materials.
Mount Fire Marshal Keith Brower says the lumber supporting the roof and floors in the newer homes are connected with plates that separate quickly in a fire.
The floors collapse, roofs collapse at a greater speed than in the past.
An hour earlier this morning, firefighters were in a fire in this Leesburg home two miles away. It is of older construction, built in the late 60s or early 70s. While this fire started on the inside, it too spread up into the attic.
In older construction, the fire is typically gonna stay in the room of origin for a longer amount of time.
Firefighters say this is the reality they're dealing with, with the older homes, even with a fire in the attic. They're often able to get inside and stop the fire so there's something to salvage for the homeowner and the house is still standing. But with the newer construction, all bets are off.
We used to think that we had anywhere from eight to 10 minutes and we had a safe margin to go in and begin attacking the fire.
But Brower says the fire spread is so fast and the potential for collapse so great in newer homes, that firefighters may only get a couple minutes inside to try and stop it spreading before giving up. It also means the people who live there have a shorter time to escape.
Radiant heat travels in a straight line.
And this morning showed another typical problem. Homes as far away as 150 feet had vinyl siding that began to melt. Brower says a delayed alarm could mean more than one home is burning by the time firefighters get there. Dave Statter, Nine News Now.
Home builders have long said that they use those lighter weight materials and construction methods to make houses more economically. In Maryland, some jurisdictions require sprinklers in all new single-family homes. That's a battle between home builders and the Fire Service that is still going on in Virginia and in other states across the country.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. For your information, we did debate this issue at our first reading at the council meeting last council session at length. Yet the amendments failed by a four to three vote. So the, what we're, and then it passed on the first reading without the amendments. And what we're voting on this evening is the second, third reading without the amendments. So personally, I hope at some time in the future, we, as a staff and council, can revisit this issue. But it is where we are this evening as we go through our consent agenda on the second and third reading. But we appreciate you being here, appreciate the information. We'll keep soaking in all of the information as staff and outsiders present. But thank you for being here. Anyone else to be here on any item that is on the agenda?
Tough act to follow. My name is Travis Barjon. I live at 323 North Lorimer, just down the street. Here to talk a little bit about the item mentioned under the other business section on the agenda.
Okay, what we're gonna do with the order of business tonight on that item is to either file the motion from the planning and zoning, as they recommended, or to have a motion setting a public hearing. And we're, those are the two items that we, we will not debate that issue this evening. We'll just be setting a public hearing or filing it if someone asks for a public hearing.
Okay.
Thank you.
I believe Shaw is here right now to come up and ask for that public hearing.
Come forward, please.
My name is Shaw Barjon. I would like to request for a public hearing. Please share about this matter.
On the issue at 238 North Fountain?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Council, let's move to item 13. And with the request for a public hearing, we need to, we need to honor that and I would so entertain a motion. So moved. So moved by boss?
Second.
Seconded by proffer. Any discussion? This would be, this would be a public hearing at our October 17th council meeting. October 17th council meeting. Any other discussion?
I only have one request for staff. We'll be asked to evaluate the items that we, or the evidence we receive at the public hearing and balance that against factors for issuance of a special use. And I believe that based upon my discussions beforehand, there are about six factors that we're to balance. I just ask that those six factors be included very clearly in our, in our materials so that we have that fresh.
We'll do that.
Yeah, they're, they're written for planning and zoning at all times on special use permits. So we'll just include those on the.
Just a suggestion.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
And again, at that public hearing, for the audience's benefit, we will entertain discussion from the public about their perceptions on whether we should approve this request or not.
Absolutely.
So we'll have plenty of opportunity to come forward and state their reasons.
Will be a full public hearing, for and against. And that date will be October 17.
Is there anyone here tonight that cannot attend?
No, we don't want to get discussions started this evening. If they can't, they can send letters or be a part of a petition or any kind of those type of things. Any other discussion? Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. The public hearing will be on October 17th at our regular council meeting. Anyone else here to speak on any item that is on the agenda? Okay, Eric, the consent agenda, please.
Mr. Mayor, I think before we read, do we have a chance for discussion over the approval of the consent agenda items?
Yes.
The only reason is we had discussed it this session. Just one of the exciting opportunities that's gonna get glossed over here very quickly because of Eric's well-trained tongue. We are passing tonight a contract for Phase One of Veterans Memorial Parkway and that is a long time in the making and a long time coming. It's just a very exciting thing to point out for citizens. This will be connecting LaSalle Avenue to County Road 306 and so on. Longtime dream of a lot of, a lot of people, long before us sitting up here, we get the benefit of actually implementing that dream. But kudos to those who worked so hard on all of that LaSalle interchange that began years ago. So it's a very exciting time.
Actually, the second phase of Veterans Memorial as it will stretch from LaSalle to William in the future.
Yeah. Now to that interchange.
Okay, Eric, please.
Building 11-136, ordinance pending Chapter Seven of the state code relating to the 2009 International Code. An ordinance pending Chapter Seven of the state code relating to the 2009 International Code. Building 11-133, ordinance pending Chapter Thirty of the code ordinance says city Cape Harbor Missouri by changing the zoning of the property located at 820 North Sprig Street in City and County Cape Harbor Missouri from City 1 to R5. An ordinance pending Chapter Thirty of the code ordinance says city Cape Harbor Missouri by changing the zoning of the property located at 820 North Sprig Street in City and County the zoning of the property located at 820 North Street, the city and county of Cape Door Missouri from C1R5. Bill number 11 dash 144, ordinance authorizing execution of air traffic control tower operating assistance grant agreement for fiscal year 2011, 2012 with Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission, ordinance authorizing execution of an air traffic control tower operating assistance grant agreement for fiscal year 2011, 2012 with Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission. Bill number 11 dash 145, and ordinance authorizing mayor to execute a special warranty to Vernon E. Rhodes Family Partners LP and Rhodes Development Company LLC for unneeded right-of-way located between North Kings Highway and Kingsway Drive in the city of Cape Door, Missouri. And ordinance authorizing mayor to execute a special warranty to Vernon E. Rhodes Family Partners LP and Rhodes Development Company LLC for unneeded right-of-way located between North Kings Highway and Kingsway Drive in the city of Cape Door, Missouri. Bill number 11 dash 146, and ordinance accepting permanent utility easements from Vernon E. Rhodes Family Partners LP and Rhodes Development Company LLC for the development located between North Kings Highway and Kingsway Drive in the city of Cape Door, Missouri. And ordinance accepting permanent utility easements from Vernon E. Rhodes Family Partners LP and Rhodes Development Company LLC for the development located between North Kings Highway and Kingsway Drive in the city of Cape Door, Missouri. Bill number 11 dash 151, a resolution authorizing city manager to execute a full line removal and relocation agreement with Union Electric Company DBA Amory, Missouri for the city of Cape Door, Missouri. Bill number 11 dash 152, a resolution authorizing city manager to execute a contract with Joker's King for Shawnee Park Center of paving improvements in the city of Cape Door, Missouri. Bill number 11 dash 153, a resolution authorizing city manager to execute an agreement with Locky Smith Finishing Inc. for the Veterans Memorial Drive Phase One project for the city of Cape Door, Missouri. Bill number 11 dash 154, a resolution authorizing city manager to execute an agreement with Asa Asphalt for the 2011 asphalt overlay program in the city of Cape Door, Missouri. Bill number 11 dash 155, a resolution authorizing city manager to execute a license and indemnity agreement with Atheneus Missouri Hospital Association for installation of fiber optic wiring in city right-of-way in the city of Cape Door, Missouri.
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
So moved by Tracy.
Second.
Seconded by Swan. Any discussion? Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? We have two new ordinances this evening. Bill number 11 dash 141, an ordinance approving the record plat of Lowman subdivision, first reading.
So moved.
So moved by Voss?
Second.
Seconded by Swan. Any discussion? Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? And number 12, bill number 11 dash 150, an ordinance approving the record plat of Dombrowski's first subdivision.
So moved.
So moved by Tracy.
Second.
Seconded by Proffer. Any discussion? Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? There are no appointments this evening and our other business has been handled.
Moved to adjourn.
Adjourned by Voss, seconded by Landzati. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.
Yeah. Yeah.